Good evening. Welcome to the February 21st, 2022 President's Day, Merrimack School District, School Board Meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we move into our agenda items, what I'd like to do is ask Lynn Christensen, she's on new business item number A, to just come up while she's here and review the discussion with School District Moderator Lynn Christensen in preparation for the deliberative session. Lynn, thank you very much for joining us this evening and for your time. And also, before we move forward, I just wanted to let everyone know that Lori Peters is excused this evening.
What can I tell you?
Well, we just, just typical with, you know, prior years, just wanted to understand the preparation for the deliberative session, see if anyone in the school board had any questions, or if you had any questions for us, and just to find out a little bit about the preparations for that date.
We're gonna do it just like we've done it for the past 30 years. We will be masked in case anybody is asking. There will be a small section in the back of the room that if somebody can't or won't wear a mask, they won't come in the main door, they'll go around to the back of the gymnasium, come in the back door, there will be a moderator there that will help get them checked in.
I'm sorry? You're fine.
Short pockets. And they will be able to sit in a small section in the back where any unmasked people will be, they'll be able to speak from there, they'll be able to see everything that's going on, but they will not be in the general population. We'll have people at the door with, if you don't have supply of masks, the town has supplies, we'll have masks there for anybody who wants them. Other than that, the meeting's gonna run the same as we've always done it. We'll recognize people to make motions, to make seconds, to speak to motions, and we'll determine what's gonna be on the warrant and how it's gonna be on the warrant.
Okay, school board, do you have any questions?
You've all done it before.
Yeah. And then, just a question regarding the difference. So will there be two microphones? So if someone that is unmasked...
There'll be a microphone in the back of the room in the section where the unmasked people are that they will be able to use, as well as the one that's normally in the front, right between the rows. The seating is set up so that one section has individual seats that are spaced apart. The other section will have pairs of seats so that husband and wife come in, they can sit together. I don't, they can be, they don't have to be socially distanced, but we'll have it set up like that so that there will be space between people. We're trying to keep people safe, and whether you agree or you don't agree, or you think you should do or you shouldn't do, we're trying to be kind to everybody and understand and respect everybody's point of view while making allowances for those that have different ones. Merrimack has always done this. We've never had a problem in our meetings. Everybody's been polite, everybody's been kind, everybody's been respectful. We've never had an issue. I don't expect to have one now.
I was just saying, so everyone's gonna need to have a photo ID to get...
No.
No? Okay, 'cause...
That's elections. That's not the deliberative session.
Okay.
But the difference is you cannot register to vote at the deliberative session.
Right.
You can at the election, but you...
So you have to be on the voter checklist.
Yes, you do. And you've got time to, in fact, tomorrow evening, yes, tomorrow evening, if you are not on the checklist now, you can come down to Town Hall and get on the checklist so that you can vote.
Okay.
Also, yeah, that's the only time before the deliberative session that you can vote. There's a website, on the Secretary of State's website, that you can go to. I've posted it on my Facebook election place. You can go and you can look, because this was a purge year. So if you didn't vote for the past 10 years, first of all, shame on you, and second of all, you would've received a notice from the town clerk's office that said, "Shame on you. If you wanna stay on the checklist, you need to let us know that you wanna stay on the list, otherwise you will be dropped." And we always have a few people that go, "I've always voted here," and I'm saying, "No, you haven't." So that's not to say that at the election, you can't re-register at that point, but you cannot do it for the deliberative session. So if you're not on the list now, you need to come down tomorrow night and re-register, or you, you can come in and listen, but you can't vote.
And then that deliberative session is March 8th at 7:00?
Correct.
That's right. So, and that's the school district, and then the town deliberative session is at the 9th?
The next night, yep.
The next 9th, Wednesday the 9th.
So setup will stay the same, the town will run the same way. We've always done it that way, and like I said, everybody is used to how it works, so.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, hi Lynn. The same masking protocol's going to be in place for the town deliberative session?
Absolutely. It's my meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely. So everybody has the same, same rules.
Any other questions? Any comments?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thanks for taking time out of your schedule.
I just, I just need to know who's gonna be responsible for making these motions. And when it comes to the article, I will announce the article number and the subject of the article, and then whoever's going to make the motion can either say, "I move the article as printed," or they can read the article, whatever they wish to do. But I'd like to know ahead of time, who's planning on making the motions?
We'll get that information over to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
While Lynn is here, did you want to do 6B since she's here and could...
We'll discuss, we'll get that information over to her, that's fine. We'll just go through. Yeah. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is recognitions. Do we have any recognitions this evening?
No recognitions this evening.
Okay, informational update. The superintendent update?
Well, we have completed almost one week of the optional masking. And let me stop there for a minute, if you want to go back to public participation?
Yeah. Better le- better le- reader than you.
I start jumping around. All right, public participation. Let's open it up for anyone that has public participation this evening. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. I just wanted to express my overwhelming support for Fern and her entire team here tonight around social emotional learning. As a parent, I greatly appreciate the work that they've done and that they've, resources they've made available to our children and to caregivers of the district. I think it's incredibly important. Just last Tuesday, at the special meeting that the board held around masking policies, we heard concerned parents writing in with concerns about bullying over their child choosing to still wear a mask, and we heard a parent who was present sharing her concerns over her child who had experienced some bullying because they have chosen not to wear a mask. And we know that emotional well-being goes well beyond masking. But this pandemic has been hard on everyone, and I can't think of a more critical time to really put into use these skills that help our children to focus better, to build empathy, to be able to work as a team, skills that help them not only be a successful learner here in school, but then to go on in their lives as adults. So just full heartfelt thank you and my support to them. I also just wanna give a quick shout out, I've been meaning to do it, to the Unified Arts Teachers at Thornton's Ferry School. I was working as a substitute there last month. I had an opportunity to see the work that they put in for the learning showcase that they do for the 3rd and 4th graders at that school, and the level of creativity and thoughtfulness and effort that they put into that was so impressive. And it's just great to see that approach, making these children active participants and partners in their education by harnessing their interests and creativities into these different programs. And I wish I had that when I was a student, and I'm grateful that we have that available here in Merrimack. So thanks to them.
Thank you.
One email, and it's from Sheri Kurian of 5 Portside Drive. "I want to say thank you for the SEL work the district is doing in our schools. It makes me chuckle when my kindergartner tells me she has a big feeling and it is called frustration, and we are able to talk through it. Then she explains some of the strategies she has learned to help her process these feelings. Thank you for the many tantrums we have been able to avoid due to this wonderful and important teaching that you have incorporated into the student's education. These skills are invaluable and will build a healthy and strong emotional foundation for many years to come. Also, please make it a priority to start paying the teachers more. Teachers are the backbone of our students' education, and we need to make sure we are getting and retaining the best teachers because it all trickles down from there. This is so, so important right now, and they are wearing so many hats to try and support our students through these challenging years. Thank you again, Sheri Kurian."
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry, thank you.
Naomi Halter, 10 Everest Drive. I'll be really fast, 'cause Heather and Sheri actually both said very eloquently a lot of what I was gonna say. I'm really, really grateful that the district is making these efforts to pay attention to the social and emotional well-being of our students, especially coming out of the pandemic, in that it's been a really hard couple of years, and it's not just the, the social and emotional piece. The social and emotional piece will feed the academic piece, and our children will do better in school. They'll be better prepared to learn, the, what they, what they are learning, they'll retain better. It's just, it covers so many things and it's so vital, and I wanted to thank you all for your work with that.
Anything else in the email?
Nothing.
Nothing further.
Any other public comments this evening?
Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. Mine will be very short, because everybody's pretty much said what I was gonna say already, but just wanna say again, reiterate my gratitude for basically the treasures we have with the staff that run our emotional wellness, social wellness programs here. And also, just to add, the teachers that follow along with that. My child's teachers, I'm saying that right, have been just fantastic in sort of following the same principles. I know, I've just seen it pay off with my own kid, particularly with everything that's happened the last couple of years, so kudos and thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, now we will move to item number four, the informational updates. Bill Olson?
Yes, we are just about one week into the optional masking, and I wanna thank all of the staff and the parents for making it work as seamlessly as possible. I had a call from a parent last week as a result of a message that I sent out that said, "It'll be wonderful to see children's smiles again," the smiles of people who thought that message might be shaming those who are continuing to wear masks, and that is not the case. As you can see tonight, a lot of people are still preferring to wear masks. Whether you argued over the past two years for masking or against masking, we respect each other. And the principals are very aware of any bullying or any comments that any student might make to another, but so far, I have not been aware of any, and that we want our staff members who wanna wear a mask, continue to wear masks, to feel comfortable doing so, and our students also, okay, and our parents entering the building. So let's move forward as positively as possible, respecting, continuing to respect each other, and we'll be just fine. So please know in that message, there was no ill intent towards those who prefer to continue to wear a mask. Leadership team had absolutely terrific school safety training last week, conducted by Detective Bill VanderSaid from the Police Department. He was assisted by two members of the Fire Department. We will be training over the next month and a half, the crisis management teams in each respective school. Then we will be planning for training eventually of the staff and the students also, as we approach the beginning of the next school year. We meet, the crisis management team meets weekly every Tuesday from 9:00 to 10:30. We're making terrific progress in, in reviving, and not necessarily even reviving, but updating the great work that, that Matt has done in the past in terms of school safety. We're just taking a look at some new procedures. We're adding some particular incidents to the flip chart, school crisis management flip chart. We wanna make sure also that we add a tab for bus accidents, so we can be able to notify parents and public safety officials immediately if there's an accident. Something we learned a couple of weeks ago also, that we are adding a tab to the flip chart for a missing student, because that's very important. Matt and I had a debriefing meeting with the police chief and deputy chief late last week to go over the procedures that took place and what we will do to work together moving forward. And so it was a very, very positive and cooperative meeting. The school calendar committee is working very aggressively on putting together a new school calendar. We're going to give the calendar a whole new look, something that hopefully will be a little bit more user-friendly, be a little bit more informative, be a little bit more snazzy, quite honestly, for lack of a better term, because we're introducing some color to it and some additional information, some school hours, which some people still are not quite sure of when the schools start, and the end of the, the day, marking terms. I have a guide that I will be presenting to you that will be given to our staff, that is a, a guide to religious and cultural celebrations of significance that gives the staff a little bit of insight into what families and students observe on different religious and cultural holidays. That brings our awareness to a higher level in terms of tests, major assignments, projects, scheduling events at night. We wanna be as sensitive as possible to, to people who celebrate different holidays throughout the year. And so we're still refining that, but we will be presenting that to you to take a look at also, to eventually give to the staff. And I'll stop there with the only other item I'd like to say is to our staff, to our students and families, we wish you a wonderful vacation next week. It's been a long time coming. It's been a long stretch, it seems, since, you know, the December break to Christmas break to right about now, and it's time. So have a wonderful vacation.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, next, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update, Kim?
Good evening. We've had a busy month. We have, in particular, we've had our first Visioning Task Force meeting take place, and that was with Bill Wilmot, and on that committee, we have a school board member, we have three students, two from the high school, one from the middle school. We have educators, and we have parents, and we have business partners. So we're up to 30. It's higher than we wanted, but we really could not be exclusionary in this. This, just as a reminder, is helping us to formulate a vision of a learner for K through 12. That will be part of the work that we do with curriculum, kind of the pillars for the curriculum, and making sure that the curriculum is actually aligned to those qualities that we're identifying for learners. We also, we have our next meeting scheduled. It's a three to five, two-hour meetings once a month. Really hope to march through this really nicely. We have various homework assignments that people are going to be doing in this month. Everyone has four to, four to five questions that they're going to ask 10 people who are in their constituents. So if they're a community person, or if they're a parent, or if they're an educator, or they're administrator, they're going to go and ask these four questions, and they're really rounded around, grounded in trying to understand what the community and the school, parents, students want, foresee as important skillsets for students. That will eventually lead to the strategic plan. We're really looking forward to this, and we're marching right through. It's a lot of fun. We also had our first working session with EduPlanet 21, which is a software. It's the company that we hired to help populate, the software that we bought, that was, will be, we're putting all the curriculum into this particular software. And that's really nice, because it will be the first time that the curriculum is really aligned, regardless of content area, and everyone will be using the same process for curriculum building. Those are two big events that took place. We're also getting prepared for our March early release day, where we'll be working with all parent educators and professional staff in understanding restorative practices.
Sure. Nope, you're fine.
I apologize. I didn't think I had this in my packet. Mike Susie sent me some accomplishments of some of our students at the high school, and they're quite extraordinary. The girls' swim team is Division One state runner-up. Freshman Sylvia Horton is a state all-around gymnastics champion, outstanding. Senior Evan Torres, Division Two state wrestling champion at his weight class. Sophomore Anthony Almonte, Division Two state wrestling runner-up at his weight class, and sophomore Mitchell Krupp, Division Two state runner-up at his weight class. Great accomplishments, brought great pride to the individuals, their families, and to our school district, and we congratulate every one of them.
Thank you. All right, next up, any questions there? Next up is the Assistant Superintendent for Business Update, Matt?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate what Bill Olson was, was talking about, the emergency management training that we went through. The, the presentation we got from Police and Fire at our last leadership meeting was invaluable. I know I've worked on this with Les Cotter, everybody, a lot of people know, remember that name from years ago, and it doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but when you look at the documentation, it was that long ago. You know, granted, we've had plenty of practical, actual experience. So you, from my, my perspective, you kinda take it for granted that, of course, everybody knows what to do, because we've been through this a bunch of times. At Reed's Ferry Elementary School, when Kim was the principal there, we had a boiler kind of belched some black smoke, and we had to, you know, create this whole emergency management team. We met with, it just worked like a charm. But to get it documented on paper and to do the flip charts so they're available to everybody, 'cause not everybody has been here for a couple of decades, and when you're, you thought that was funny, Gemma?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay, it's all right. And so, you, you have, you have, you do have kind of a tendency to kinda let time fly, and you don't realize, there's a whole bunch of people in here who haven't gone through this, who haven't been through the protocols, who haven't, you know, kind of looked at everything. So I really kinda wanna give him a lot of credit of coming in here, recognizing that as a need, and setting us up in the future. I will say, we, we did have a minor discussion about one point, and that being that we created an emergency brochure for parents years ago, and it just coincidentally looked like the one that Bill in his hand had done in Westford. And I said, "Did you take our format?" And he says, "No, you took our format." And so it's just kind of ironic how school, two school systems, separated by states, separated by, I don't know, 20, 20 miles, something like that, can come up with almost the exact same thing, not even being in contact with one another.
It's amazingly similar.
Yeah, it's ama- it's eerily similar. So anyway, so that'll be updated, everything will be updated, and so it's, it's, it's great to, to get into this, and it's, it's great to, you know, finally get around to a lot of stuff that you wanted to do, that you kept thinking about in the back of your mind, and you realize, hey, it's been a while, let's address this. So I just wanna thank him for that, and thank him too. Thank you.
Great. Any questions there? Next up is the school board update. I just had the, essentially, we've already talked about it with Lynn Christensen, which is the deliberative session that's coming up on March 8th. For those unfamiliar, that's a very important meeting. It's March 8th at 7:00 PM at the J Muse Upper Elementary, and that's literally part of the town meeting. It's essentially before all of the, the budget and all of the warrant articles go to the ballot. Very critical, I think, to show up. So just a reminder that, again, that's March 8th, and we hope to see you all there.
Can I ask a silly question? Our school board meeting on Monday still happens, so we still do Monday, and then we do Tuesday as well.
Correct.
Making sure.
Yeah. We'll keep it a short agenda, though, for that day. So that's all I have. Any questions there? All right, next up, Student Representative Update.
So the first part of my update is very exciting news for the high school, mostly for students and parents, and that is that Student Council has started prom planning. And so it's, I don't know, it's just exciting for high school.
Good!
And so we'll have more in detail information about that after break for students and parents. And then my second update, I would like to echo what Mr. Olson was saying, and further report on some of the athletics at the high school. And I wanna congratulate Coach Saunders, Coach Roby, and the girls' varsity swim team for winning second place at the Division One state championships this past weekend. And so, in addition, I would like to congratulate Meredith LeBelzak, and she earned an individual championship in the 200 individual medley, and a number of MHS swimmers placed in the top 10 of their individual events. So I just wanna say congratulation for all of the effort that was put in for those students. So, thank you.
Yeah, definitely worth mentioning, and very congratulations to all of our student athletes. Next up is the old business, number A, or letter A, Social Emotional Learning Strategies for Success in School and Beyond, Fern and team. Good evening. We are so pleased to be here, and I just wanna thank the people who came tonight. That was really a surprise and wonderful to hear from the community. We are super excited as a team of educators and parents coming together tonight to talk about social emotional learning, SEL. It's been a while since we kind of did a kind of update about what things look like here in the district. A little over two weeks ago, I was asked to do this for you tonight, and I had just been in Rebecca's classroom, and a little girl, I said to the little, the girl there named Katie, who you'll hear more from later, I said, "Will you show me around your classroom?" And she immediately took me around, and the first places she took me to were all the features of a classroom that would indicate that the teacher has really put a lot of effort and thought into how to create a classroom environment that is very attuned to a child's social emotional needs and is thinking from a very holistic perspective. And so it really struck me that these must be the most important places for her, that they really matter to her. It's what makes her, it queues her up to feel safe and comfortable in her learning environment, which is so important for learning. There's a lot of science and new understanding about what makes, you know, what enhances learning and helps learning happen for students, and that was really clear in that moment. So when I was asked to do this, I immediately went, I, you know, it's not me who should be introducing this at this point, years later, after we've put this into play. We should really be hearing from kids and teachers and family members who have now been exposed and are experiencing this, and especially since the pandemic. And especially since the pandemic, when it has been so much on the forefront of people's minds. So I reached out and a, had great support from the people I reached out to, who were very enthusiastic. And so as you can see here tonight, I'm, there's a flank of fabulous, amazing Merrimack educators, second to none anywhere. So I wanted to just thank you so much to everybody up, up here. You'll see the contributors and presenters tonight. Not everybody is presenting, not, not everybody could make it, but many of the people are here. So I'm going to read their names so everybody can kind of wave to the audience at home. Caitlin is here, she is a parent. And Jamie Cordero, fourth grade teacher at MES. Dr. Jessica Gott, you'll see her later, she's not here tonight, but she contributed. Sarah Hartwell is another parent who contributed. Kristin Rubachok is a health and PE teacher at Merrimack High School, who happens to have been one of my students when, a long, long time ago, in another district, far, far away. And so that was fun to see her as a health teacher for us. Rebecca Lassard is here tonight. Pam Foster couldn't make it, but she helped with this tonight. Sherry Roswag is here. Kylie Russo. Bunny Serenita. Zoe Schwalgi is not here tonight, but contributed and you'll hear from her. And Whitney Tafe, who is a parent. So the goal tonight is just for the community to understand what SEL is and how it is leveraged to support student wellness and development and why it is an integral component of teaching and learning. Recently, I heard someone use a phrase and I wish I knew where it came from. I've searched it, but nobody seems to, there's no claim to it. But well, kids learn well. And I just thought that really helped me sort of frame this in the most simple way. And this has always been true and the pandemic has really shined a spotlight on that fact. And so we are going to learn more about that tonight. So I am going to actually introduce Rebecca and Jamie, who are going to start us off tonight.
I think that's on. Is this on? Yep. Okay. Hello, my name is Rebecca Lassard and I'm a third grade teacher right now at Thornton's Ferry School. And I'll be here just helping to explain a little bit of some of the background of social emotional learning, or what we refer to as SEL. And really more so, our team came together thinking about some of the misconceptions and hopefully tonight clear up some of those misconceptions for people in the community. So when they hear the term, it can be really viewed as a positive for our students and what they're experiencing in the classroom, but really more so how it affects and transforms into their daily lives. So if you look up at our slide, is this, should we refer to this up here for everyone? So in the middle of the slide, what you'll see is kind of the idea behind SEL. And in the middle of the circle, you'll see five components that Jamie's going to talk about in just a minute. But I like to think about it as, in the center is the student. And so you have the student who is trying to access social and emotional learning. And so they have the five areas, but then what I really appreciate about this framework is that the students are in the center and the classrooms may be at the forefront of helping them to experience and be taught these skills explicitly, but it's really the whole school setting, the families, the caregivers, and the community as a whole that is really surrounding the student and is going to be the areas that we hope that they are going to be practicing these skills every day. So I just really like this image and what it represents for SEL. And I think Jamie's going to go over the components.
Okay, so I'll just start with self-awareness. I'm going to kind of just go through like a short definition for each of them. The self-awareness piece is to understand their own thinking and their own feelings, which then goes into self-management, to help them manage emotions and also to help them manage their behaviors and, and how they act upon those emotions that they're feeling. Relationship skills is, I'm sorry, social awareness is to help them understand the perspective of others and to kind of show, how to show empathy towards others. The relationship skill is to establish and then maintain healthy relationships. And responsible decision-making is to make caring and constructive decisions and personal choices in different social situations.
And so interestingly, when Jamie and I were talking, there's, just in prepping for this meeting, before we really get into what SEL is and what it isn't, we were talking about this circle and how for our own selves as adults, the steps we took, just for myself, self-awareness, being nervous. I knew I might feel nervous tonight, so I'm going to write some notes. We talked ahead of time and made some decisions together. That management piece of being able to manage myself and how to carry myself in front of an audience, even though this is something I'm really passionate about and I could talk about on end, you know, being respectful that there's a time set and what are the most important things to say. And then for Jamie and I, we talked about relationship skills. Well, as we planned this and decided who was going to speak, just being respectful of each other and our own comfortabilities, we found each other, checking in with each other, what are you most comfortable with? And then that social awareness piece, our committee really thought about that a lot and thought about our audience tonight. We find this to be very beneficial, but we wanted to be really mindful of the fact that there's a lot of people in the community that aren't doing this day-to-day and they just hear these terms and then they might talk and have some misconceptions. And we really wanted to be aware of where everyone's at. And I don't think there's anyone in Merrimack that doesn't care about our kids. I think that that is huge. I've been here for 20 years and I really feel strongly about that. It's why I've stayed in Merrimack for 20 years. That's very strong and I think out in the community, everyone cares about our kids. And so we wanted to be socially aware tonight of bringing up things to help, to help everybody come to a common place of understanding for social emotional learning so that we can all support it for our children. And then that just the responsible decision-making tonight, again, deciding what to present to everyone. So it just really reminded us that this really is important. These skills that we're helping these kids attain is going to help them in their daily life. And I wish, wish for myself that I had this when I was younger because I was really afraid for public speaking and things. But even SEL and the lessons I do to my kids, I find myself using my tool belt tonight. You know, when my legs got up here and they started jittering, I found myself belly breathing and, and just doing these things. And I actually can't wait to go back to the students tomorrow and, because they know all about this and they know that we're doing this tonight. And I can't wait to go back to them and be able to be real and say, "I felt really nervous. I had to put my hands on my legs and make sure, you know, that I could speak." And so it's just, it's really important. So what our committee put together for the community is just really thinking about what is SEL. And so one of the biggest aspects of this program is that it prioritizes positive educator and student relationships. Really putting that as a big importance. And what it isn't...
So what it isn't is a trade-off with time spent teaching an academic subject. And I have to add to that, that it actually does the reverse. It actually gives us more time to focus on the academics because the students are using these SEL strategies and, and they're becoming responsible for their own learning.
And so what is ESL, SEL? Teaching and integrating evidence, informed strategies, and skills that help students learn. And so what that means, this is, you know, the SEL program K to four, it's a research-based program that is put together with targeted skills for each lesson that the children could be a part of.
But it is not about the teacher teaching to personal beliefs.
What is SEL? Helping kids to develop necessary skills for success in the workplace.
But it is not mental health assessment, data collection, or counseling.
So what it is, again, intentional, that word came up a lot in our committee. It's intentionally creating a school climate that supports connectedness, belonging, and equity.
And as Rebecca said before, even though the classroom is at the forefront of that, it is not about leaving parents and caregivers out of the equation.
I think part of your packet that you received tonight actually speaks to that. Every unit is broken up and every other lesson, there is a handout that is sent home to families. And I think most classroom teachers put that as optional. I have at least 80% of my kids send it back. And if I don't send one home, they actually ask for it. It's just an opportunity for the parents to see or caregivers to see who, what we're doing in the classroom and how they can connect to that. And it just encourages some great conversation. So really, when we thought about what is SEL, it's really a partnership, a true partnership with caregivers and the community being a huge part of that.
May I just ask, we did get these handed to us. The example that we got, what grade would have gotten this packet, the sample packet?
Yep, I can speak to that. So the letter that you see in the front, it was actually interesting. I've taught second, third, and fourth. I never realized that the letter that is sent each year is actually identical. So the beginning sheet that you see, that's a letter, that's sent home in the very beginning of the year, just reminding caregivers what the children will be experiencing during the year for the program. So then the program itself is split into four main categories and those categories are consistent, K to four, just the lessons build upon each other. And so what I did for you is, the very first one is from the first unit, the Skills for Learning. That's a first grade example. And then the second one that should be in there is from our empathy unit, I believe, from second grade. And I think it said, I think at the top they say which grade level it is, do they? Okay, great. And then the third one is from third grade and then the last one is from fourth grade for the problem solving.
Thank, we had these just before the meeting.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Sorry.
So I just, I didn't want to make it too cumbersome of a packet, just to kind of give an overview of, of the connected part to the parents and what they can do with kids at home.
And we would want to say that it actually now goes up to sixth grade. So we have this...
Oh, K six.
Oh, great. At this point, yeah.
Oh, that's excellent.
So...
The next part.
Our, we have our videos. Yeah, we have some videos. We have, this was a very quick turnaround. We had, we spent, first of all, this team worked really hard together for the last two and a half weeks to, to do this for you. And one of the things we really wanted to do was bring you into the classroom. I had this, you know, time with Katie and we went, oh my gosh, we have to bring them into what this, you know, take some, do some movies. So I just want to, you'll see that I want to thank a student at the high school, Karen Tatum. He helped me with the first one, which is about students talking about their SEL experience. We did it under a really tight time pressure. So the last student, I want to apologize for his, he's cut off a little bit in the last one, so.
So yes, I think the, our main hope in both of these videos, but especially with the students, is just how you see social emotional learning impacting the whole child and how it shapes their classroom and school culture.
And with the peace place, we have some posters and some fidgets and some books and some, and a piecebook, just in case you're feeling. It helps us, it's a cozy space and it really helps us to calm down. So if we're angry or something, we can use some of these steps on here that we learned in second step and also, also that we just, second step and also the posters tell us some things. So over here is the peace, the peace buckets. So these can go in the peace place also and they have these fidgets and some things. So one, we're going over the peace place. If you want to like play with one, it helps us calm down, it's calm down tools. We can do that.
I think the second step lessons help with a lot of real-life problems. The empathy poster gives a lot of advice, like examples on how to talk to people when they're upset or angry or mad. And I think having the lessons makes you like a better friend.
If you get an answer wrong, you can get a little bit, little frustrated, but you can use the calm down steps.
It helps me stay focused and be on task when I'm learning or just anywhere, even at home. Like if there's something hard, I can just calm down and stay focused.
It helps me when I'm nervous about tests. And you can take deep belly breaths.
I like to share my ideas so we can work, like if we're doing STEM, we can work out our plan to make something like stay up or, like not break when it hits the ground.
How I reflect on the concert. The first question...
I'm going to pause it because it seems to be frozen, so I just wanted to... Because it's just too good to... Too, too good to have it be frozen.
We knew these were going to happen, we didn't get to see these.
Refresh, sure.
So cute.
You can get a little bit, little frustrated, but you can use the calm down steps.
It helps me stay focused and be on task when I'm learning or just anywhere, even at home. Like if there's something hard, I can just calm down and stay focused.
It helps me when I'm nervous about tests. And you can take deep belly breaths.
I like to share my ideas so we can work, like if we're doing STEM, we can work out our plan to make something like stay up or, like not break when it hits the ground.
How I reflect on the concert. The first question is, how did I feel before, during, and after the concert? It asked which song was the easiest for me to play and why it wasn't.
Was it the easiest? On the back, I said Hot Cross Buns was the easiest because I practiced it the most. Did a smiling face plus heart equals flute? Because I love playing the flute.
Playing the flute has really helped me with life lessons. It taught me like how not to be anxious because I used to be afraid of what people think about me. And now I know it's okay for me to make mistakes. Playing the flute has helped me be me and make new friends.
I bet you can drag it. See the little dot? I think you can drag that to where you are.
Drag it over for...
You see where you are?
There, just drag it.
Unfortunately, it seems like I have the video that has the kids cut off. So we'll, I'll have to work at pulling up the, I had a section for middle schoolers and high schoolers. So right now, it's a little tricky for me to get that without taking a pause. So maybe we'll move on and then maybe after, even in between, I could...
I was just going to suggest that maybe we can upload it to the website, district website.
Yes, definitely.
If people want to view it there.
That would be great.
It really is fascinating. I know there's some glitches with it, but thank you.
Okay. So... Yeah, yes. So then, the next one, the next video is just about some educators talking about what the... what the instruction and the delivery for that looks like. And kind of giving you a rough idea of like the scope and sequence of the, of the program and to see how it looks with academic engagement and understand the why behind it.
If you only list your vacation home on Airbnb, you might.
We are going to vacation, so, you know, just a little preview of that.
That's good for all of our SEL.
Is it finally providing some consistency? The kids are seeing this consistent from kindergarten to fourth grade. Teachers are finally having some common language that the kids can build upon every year. For myself personally, when we started to post our learning goals, I find it very important for children to see that social emotional learning is at the top because it directly affects every other part of their day.
And I want you to take a look at what's going on or what you think might be going on. And I'd really like you to use your empathy skills. Can you tell me how you think they're feeling right now? How are they feeling? What would you say, David? They look like they're feeling frustrated.
T.
And so T is going to stand for, we're going to think about solutions. Can you say that?
Think about solutions.
Good. So we're going to think of those solutions. And what we really are going to be looking for are the solutions that are safe and respectful. Because there's going to be choices that we have and there's going to be feelings that we have and choices we might feel we want to make in a moment. But by calming down, hopefully we'll see that there's different choices to make. And that's what E stands for. Say E.
E.
We're going to explore consequences. Can you say that?
Explore consequences.
The scope and sequence of the second step program focuses on skills for learning, empathy, understanding emotion, and problem solving. I noticed that students use the posters and songs for learning in my classroom throughout the day. Eyes watching, ears listening, voices quiet, bodies still. We also are big on our trade of the month, which goes along with all of our second step lessons and where we are in our units. And we talk about what each trade of the month means. We do some activities about it. We also read picture books at our morning meeting time every day. I can speak up when it would be easier to stay quiet. I can say no, even to my friends. Assertively, yes, and? Yes, respectfully. At our morning meeting, we talk a lot about how we want our classroom run together. So right now, our target behavior is keeping our classroom clean. And together, we talked about how we're going to accomplish that goal. We also have a class contract that we refer to if someone needs a reminder. So I find that all of this ties into the second step program really nicely, along with those real life scenarios that they get to watch in fourth grade. And it just helps to build us to be together in the classroom and.
One of the ways that I use SEL in my classroom is to try to make my curriculum relevant and engaging to their lives. So this was a project we did, a UDL activity that we did in the computer lab where they had to connect to a story. And then I showcase all of their work here and then they take the pride and excitement in seeing it and looking at each other's projects. And I just feel that that gives them the voice in this classroom to see that they matter and they're important and I care about their work.
At the high school, the Learning Commons is a place to bring social, emotional, and academic learning together. By creating different zones with flexible seating, we're able to meet students' varied needs. We have quiet and collaborative zones for academic work and puzzles, coloring pages, and games as a way for students to build relaxation into their day. The Learning Commons is a space welcoming to all.
As I have worked to embed rich SEL practices into my classroom community, I see students who have higher thresholds for frustration. Students have more endurance for learning new material. Students with healthier and happier friendships. And I see my students experiencing more wonder, more joy, and more excitement for learning. As a teacher, I'm experiencing more wonder, more joy, and more excitement for learning.
I can make an indoorsy person outdoorsy.
Exactly.
That'd be so nice walking in the sand right now.
Okay.
Someone's really planning that vacation week.
Okay, so we're, we hope you enjoyed those. I will definitely be posting the entire video that we had made for the, that included the middle school and high school students talking. We had a hard time getting that one loaded up today. So we wanted to do more tonight than, you know, just telling you about it. We wanted to show you. And so now we're going to move through the videos and through this discussion. Now we're going to talk a little bit about some of the other, sort of deepen the awareness of the why behind SEL and some of the information that's really helpful. So we're going to cover now the, how SEL prepares students for success beyond school, in school, as learners, that they can carry forward. And how also that we are mitigating the impact of SEL and COVID through universal supports like this. And then how we are drawing on evidence-based approaches to building learning and life skills.
SEL is not a program taught in isolation. It is our path to understanding ourselves as thinkers and learners and applies to every area of learning, whether it is solving a math word problem or reading a passage, writing an essay, or charting results from a science experiment, creating a sculpture, shooting from the foul line, or in my room, reading music to perform a song. SEL helps us become experts on ourselves while also helping us connect meaningfully to those around us. With an SEL program such as Second Steps, we learn a common language and common skills that we then practice throughout the day at school and at home. Just like math facts, drawing, and music playing, SEL depends on practice. And so we take what we learn in our SEL Second Step lessons and practice everywhere. I'm most familiar with my band room, so a trumpet student practices SEL when she makes a horrendous sound in fifth grade, stops, thinks, notices, adjusts, and then tries again. Band students complete guided concert reflection sheets that help them identify their emotional journey during the concert and their performance quality. And from those two pieces of information, they can make their next goals. In band, we practice self-awareness. Am I accurate with pitch and rhythm? Am I practicing good tone? While also monitoring and responding to those around them with, am I blending my sound with my neighbors? Am I playing softly enough for the flutes to be heard? Am I in tune? I took a walkabout in the halls of J Muse last week and SEL is being practiced everywhere. It's just what we want. I saw sixth graders, the downstairs team, working in groups of four or five students to create these larger-than-life-size diagrams of cells. And to have, you know, four or five, sixth graders working together on different parts of this giant paper and collaborating and working out problems and disagreements and coming upon how to agree on the best way to do something and correcting each other kindly. That's, that's what we want as we get older to be able to do. I saw and heard students reflecting about their ceramic process in art. That's communication that's up on the screen. I heard students performing ukulele compositions that they wrote in music and then performed for their classmates, and that is trust. Because it's your own creation you're putting out there and it's probably going to have a problem or two during the performance. So being able to be vulnerable in front of each other and trust that your classmates are going to support you. That's also up there. I watched children read aloud to each other, also trust and communication. So our SEL program and lessons set our foundation, which allows us to intentionally and meaningfully grow and practice perseverance, problem solving, teamwork, emotional intelligence, and trust, which are those skills that we need while we're in school, while we're in our life outside of school, and also when we move on after school into whatever our paths take us to.
So the next thing we wanted to talk about was that it's really about the development of resilience and well-being. And we've had a lot of media attention over this COVID-19 pandemic about the youth mental health crisis in this country. And we know that the mental health concerns of young people were acute even before the pandemic. And it has increased in severity. And so while we had mentioned this isn't mental health treatment by any stretch of the imagination, what it does is it helps build resilience and well-being over time. It creates the conditions for learning in which children can thrive through relationships, through connection, through belonging, through increased sense of competency and goal setting. And all of those things are associated with the development of well-being and our protective factors when it comes to creating mentally healthy and well, young people. So we just wanted to bring that, bring that into the fold as we think about the importance of SEL. And now we're going to turn this over to. Hope you're already there. Magic. Okay. So this is Caitlin Bernier and Whitney Tave, some, two parents who are on a committee that is advisory to the System of Care Committee in the district.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having us. Can you hear me? Okay, so I'm Whitney. If you look at the slide, it says, a 2017 study following the impact of 82 SEL programs on over 97,000 students found that programs benefited students over time for six months to 18 years. And as a parent, it was important for me to be here tonight and to support this effort because I see the support that it has provided my own children who attend Merrimack Schools and truthfully, myself as a parent and my husband. So some positives that come out of practicing SEL for students is that we see over time that there's an increase in academic performance. And I think initially, it's natural at times to think, as we mentioned, we were talking about what SEL is not, is to think, well, that's taking away from, you know, chances to be learning and focusing on academics. But truly, it is not. We're seeing that there are increases in academic performance when students are able to find a way to work through any, any struggles or challenging in their school day. There's an increase in positive attitudes. And SEL skills also increase positive social behaviors. So I think if you refer back to that video of those children, you can see all of those things happening. You see their sense of pride and, I don't know about you, I was really taken aback by their presence as children. There's not a chance that I would have been able to stand in front of a camera and be so eloquent, but also so proud of myself and the things I was learning. On the flip side, we're seeing a decrease in conduct problems and emotional distress. And also in, this says drug use, but I would like to point out just any kind of coping skill that is not a healthy choice. So we're, we're seeing that as well. And I think a wonderful thing is, this point has been made, is that SEL truly is something that can be taught and modeled across all settings. And again, in my own home, we're seeing that. We have those handouts. And as an adult, I'll admit, it really does make me stop and think about, you know, whatever skill we might be learning that week. You know, okay, how do I do this in my life and how can I model this for my children? So for me, I enjoy kind of thinking about things in a different way. So I do really feel that it supports my children, but also our family as well.
So, so we just wanted to, great, nice and close, bring you back to this slide to show the, the castle wheel and how it really has the families and caregivers as an important part of it. So we're kind of right in there, in the, the middle of it. So this matters to us as parents because we want the best possible outcomes for our, our kids. And knowing that we get to, that we're partnering with the school, that we're getting those communications, what they're working on, to develop, to develop soft skills is so important. And we didn't make a film because we, we see ourselves enough as parents. We, we know what we sound like. So instead, we, we had some quotes that we did. So, quote myself. SEL gives our children a clear advantage by having an evidence-based program focused on more than just academic growth, but on developing executive functioning skills like planning and completing tasks, problem solving, and building relationships. These are the same skills that we work on at home. And I'm grateful for the support that our district offers, our entire family. I'll also add in there that, that I also have gotten a nice big library of SEL books since. And my husband probably doesn't love the money I spend, but I sure do love all the content and being able to share it and all the different things that we're able to learn from that.
Yep, I can read this next one. This is from a member of our community, K A H. SEL helps parents understand the emotional needs of their child. This was not an option just a few years ago, and if it was, parents did not have access to it. SEL provides a solid foundation to children at a young age. I fully support the holistic approach in teaching a child to become a fully functioning, contributing member of the community. Sure. And before we knew that we would be sharing in this presentation, this is a quote that I shared. So quoting myself here. When an SEL student is faced with a challenge or a conflict, they're able to work through it rather than run from it or let it get them down. They have the ability to look at problems from different angles, which means they can overcome difficulties and move on quickly and in a more efficient way. And I think that speaks to, we saw in the children's video again, one of the teachers was sharing about how they have a trait of the week or a, a trait that's a theme. And, and in that classroom, it was grit and perseverance. And so they truly are learning these kinds of things.
And then the last one was from another parent in our community. I've participated in some of the district's free workshops and webinars geared towards caregivers. These sessions made it easier for me to help my daughter focus on tasks at home as well as manage her feelings in a positive way. We all know this pandemic has increased stress levels in both children and adults alike. And I would have to agree with that. And also add in that because of having all this SEL Second Step program and things like that, my kids can also remind me when I'm feeling stressed that I can do belly breathing and things like that. And, you know, it's good to be able to be like, you're right, I can, thank you. And then, you know, be like, but feel free not to tell me. Just kidding.
Okay, next we're going to hear from Kylie and Sheri. Both are kindergarten teachers at Reed's Ferry.
Hi, I'm Kylie Russo.
No, is the green light on?
There we go. Okay. I'm Kylie Russo, so it's nice to see you guys all tonight. But really what we wanted to talk about too tonight is that research shows that when time is provided for social emotional learning in the early years, there's actually really long, positive, long-term benefits that impact students. So as you can see in this slide, it really showcases the importance of helping children develop their, these social emotional skill sets. And as kindergarten teachers, we notice the value in students having opportunities for, in time, in their day for play. I think, is so important in our own social-emotional development, but also in modeling that for children. And with play, play is such a powerful tool that it really guides children and allows children to practice these skills for social-emotional learning.
I'm Sheri Roswag, kindergarten teacher at Reed's Ferry. So the kiddos are able to identify emotions, they're able to show empathy, navigate social conflict, even in kindergarten, and engage in self-regulation skills with those belly brats. They are having a voice in their classroom communities, as well as at home. They can use all of these skills now, as learners, as well as in the future, for their success in school and beyond. When we make time for SEL, there's intentional planning that goes behind it to give opportunities for our students to practice the skills in an authentic way. I know at Reed's Ferry School, we have discovery time at the end of every day, and our students have an opportunity to practice all of those skills that we're learning through our Second Step program, that we practice in our morning meetings and throughout the whole entire day. So it's nice for us to walk around as teachers and notice things like, "I saw you guys taking turns, excellent job." Or if there is a conflict, we can go through those problem-solving skills and say, "What could we do about this? How can we compromise? How can we support each other so the problem gets solved in a way that they can use later in life?" Thank you.
Thank you so much. So as you can see, we just heard just sort of how, what this looks like. That was our whole goal tonight, was to really look at what it is, how it is, and really the purpose, the why behind all of this work. And all of these teachers really intentionally think about this and incorporate this. This is just a quick summary slide, and it's really just a time for question and answers at this point. So I don't know if you have any questions at this point. Lori, you had a comment? We'll just move right along.
So, thank you very much. I think social-emotional learning is a critical component of our school system. It's hard work, it's evidence-based, it's everyone finding their passion, so thank you for finding your passion. I really liked the video of the students, I really liked that parents are involved in this, and I think that this was an exceptional, you know, presentation tonight, and it was very heartfelt, and we felt it, so thank you.
Shannon?
I just wanted to hear then a couple of things you talked about tonight. And the first thing, one of your statistics was about money, and it is money, but I think when you talked about academics and getting more academic output because of SEL, I think, you know, the thing that, because my kids didn't have it as an option, obviously, glad, wish they did, obviously glad kids do now. But I just kept hearing redirection, redirection, redirection. It sounds like that's something that's not so prevalent, because they have the coping skills, where redirection does not become part of it. So redirection being, stop the lesson, we can't, we can't conduct the lesson, we have to stop, make sure we can get back, get kids focused and forward, and then start again. And so those are things, I think, that can easily be quantified, but it's not, you know, you put it in terms of money, but it's really terms of student performance. And again, you know, I'm glad you did say something upfront as well about how the community's taking a different understanding of what this is all about. And I think that, you know, if they, if you just said to them, "We're giving them the skills, so we're not stopping the class 10 times a day to get them to get back into being in the class." And I think, you know, so, you know, the other kids that want to be in the class can also, don't have those disruptions, which will also take them off track. Because again, you know, I think it's all about what will the whole classroom look like at the end of the day if you don't have this disruption. And it's a lot of progress, it's a lot of engagement, it's a lot of depth, things that they would, they probably didn't get when my kids were there, because my son was, I called him the mayor of Fun Town, and I don't think anyone in this room had my kids, but you have my daughter. She was not the mayor of Fun Town, you were fine. But I know that, I know that that was always a challenge. And I felt badly, because I knew, I, the conversation at the dinner table was, you know, taking that time, you're taking time away from not just you, because you wanted to have the fun, but you're taking away from the kids that wanted something out of that class today. So I hope it worked, I don't know if it ever really did, but I tried. But that said, I think that, you know, we cannot, we have to double down to make sure that this progress continues, that this curriculum is supported, integrated, and understood. Because I know we have passionate parents in this room, but I'm sure we have parents that don't necessarily understand what the positive outcomes of this are, from a learning capacity. You know, and I love everything that you were talking about. While you were there, one of the other slides I saw was about soft skills. And so I looked it up, because I remembered, we had the Business Industry Association of New Hampshire come in, and it was in April of 2018, followed by your committee. The SoCal's committee was still called Mental Health Committee. And again, it was all about getting kids college and career-ready, and career-ready especially with the Business Industry Association, and how the soft skills weren't there. And so kids are coming in, even for internships, because again, that's college readiness and career readiness, being kids are going straight out to the workforce. They were incapable of putting their phones down, you know, sending a proper email, time management, showing up on time, you know, all of the things that, you know, I think with this self-regulating curriculum, that in 10 years, we're not going to see that being such a critical crisis. In 2018, they considered that a crisis. They don't have, you know, people that can go into the workforce ready without being kind of rebuilt for those skills. And then going to college, you know, getting into internships, because again, when you're in college, you're saying those kids into a business, and they're a reflection of your institution. And when they're showing up and they have those soft skills, it's a reflection on them. So it was a tough cycle for both, for both areas of the business. I just remember that from that presentation, and you followed that night, with, you know, talking about what you needed for the committee back then, which is obviously why we're here now, because we were able to fund it. So for those who question what it is, I know that we're going to, we always put this stuff on our website, so that's the great news. But I think what it comes down to is, you know, what's the cost of not doing it? And I think that is, that's an enormous cost that people should understand. And, you know, I'm glad you said, and you always say, every time you come in, keep saying it, "This is not intervention, diagnosis, and therapy. It's not, it never will be, it's not going to be, it won't." But it's about getting these kids ready to cope in an environment that they're not in control of, which we all, for the rest of our lives, will be those people. Everyone at this table has very little control over so much of what happens around you, and they're going to be best prepared to handle it. So the good news is, those kids we picked in our home, so that's good. Not my kids, they didn't get that, but I think it's so important that this continues to be doubled down on, and the work continues, and the study continues, and the measurement continues. Because again, you know, I'd love to see what this does in 10 years for those kids that are getting into the workforce, you know. And, you know, obviously, you want to take, just like in college, you always wanted to hire someone from your alma mater. I see a lot of kids that are in this program now, going into the business world, and wanting to backfill the kids that came out of this program as well. So I look at this as, you know, short-term, long-term, really long-term. We have to do the right work, get it done right the first time, and we'll have better college outcomes and career outcomes for it. So, great work, but again, this has not been overnight. So I think that we're doing it right by taking our time, measuring, and then coming back and assessing, which is what you're doing now. So, great work, keep it up. This is probably our last time together, because I'm not running for reelection this year, so I'm glad that I got to see you one more time, so.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your support from the very beginning, and has made such a huge impact on the kids of this district. And we really do stand out in the state for how much of a commitment we've made to this program.
And I've run into you in panel discussions and everything else that we were on together. So, again, you know, from my New Hampshire School Board Association stuff, but honestly, you know, we are on the forefront, we are doing more, and I think that it needs to be recognized. So this is one of the prouder accomplishments of my time here, so glad you're going to continue after I'm gone, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Jenna?
Well, you know I love this, because this is my jam all day long. I loved the fact that you just dove right in, you didn't try to avoid the weird elephant in the room of the fact that people, people are suspicious about what SEL is. And I don't know what SEL is anywhere else, well, I mean, maybe one other place, but I don't, but in, I know what it is in Merrimack, and I think it's important for us to keep saying, whatever it may be elsewhere, what it is here is life skills. It's these important life skills. I loved the parent who emailed and said, their child said, "I'm having a big feeling, and it's called frustration." That's, that's what SEL is. And, and, and I don't, you know, I don't, she didn't say it in her email, and, but I'm sure that it's also being followed up with, "It's okay to be frustrated." I know, that's what we say all the time. It's not, you're not bad or wrong, you don't have to feel bad that you're frustrated, or angry, or sad, or any of those things. They're big feelings, and it's just all about how you deal with them. And so I think that's so huge, that kids are learning that vocabulary at home. Because while that might happen in a lot of households, it doesn't happen in every household. Kids aren't always taught, you know, how to manage their feelings, how to talk about their feelings. I mean, that's something, I go into classrooms every day and talk to kids about their feelings, and some kids are like, "I don't get angry." And I'm like, "I mean, you do. I don't." Okay? Well, I mean, I promise you, you do. I don't get angry, I'm like, "And here we are!" You know what I mean? You know what I mean? Anyway, but these are life skills, and I think, I love the parent communication piece, the fact that you partner with parents, because what happens at home is as important as what happens in school, if not more important. I mean, I don't want to belittle anything, any of you all do, but we all know that, you know, what goes on at home can totally outdo what happens in a span of a few hours at school. So it's so important, and that communication piece is also important to dispel the misinformation. You know, we're not teaching your kids anything you wouldn't probably want to teach them to, anything that their employer wouldn't want them to know. You know, if we're teaching your kids to manage their emotions, and they come home, and they're managing their emotions better, that's a win! That's a win all day long, for everybody! So, you know, I think it's very, very important that we continue to be very transparent with what this is. The more that we can show parents, this is what we're doing, we're partnering with you in raising really good kids, who are going to go and be successful in life, that is how we win the support from our community, and we alleviate any of the distrust about what SEL might be. And again, I don't, it could be, you know, the evil boogeyman someplace else, but here in Merrimack, that's not what it is, it's not what we want it to be, and we want to be forthcoming with the fact that we want to be partners in raising really good kids, really good citizens, who are really good at building relationships and managing their own emotions. So thank you for all the work you do, it's really appreciated.
Thank you for your support. Yeah, and thank you, I just want to kind of recap, I have some common themes with some of the others, but, you know, as it was mentioned, I mean, this work, you know, has been, we've been doing this work in this district for many years now. And, you know, hindsight, how great that has been, especially, especially who knew COVID was going to come? Who knows all of these other challenges that children are, you can't just snap your fingers overnight and have a framework in place that's going to support, you know, our learners, you know, across the board to deal with all of these challenges. And so, you know, to be at the point that we're at right now during this time is great, and, you know, and Merrimack truly is leading the state with these efforts. And so, you know, I think that absolutely has to be recognized, the work that you all have done, that's been done in this district by so many for now quite a few years, it's really coming to fruition. And so I am proud of that, I congratulate you all for that work. And, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, our goal is, you know, when we educate children, it's college and career-ready. You know, as said, you know, by others, and that's a complex thing. It's not that you read a few books, and you take a few tests, and then there you go. It is very complex to be college and career-ready. And soft skills are really where it's at. I mean, that's the human component to, to working with people, you know, when you're young, when you're old, in between, everywhere, it's dealing with people. And, and it's not new, you know, it's really not new, it's not new that teachers have had to manage these things. I mean, I think back, I can't even believe I can remember this far, but walking into one of my elementary classes, the first day of school, and one of my teachers had a billboard set up, all sorts of artwork on it, it said, "Don't step on people's toes." I was like, "Don't step on their toes? What does that mean?" You know, and it was, there was a whole discussion in our class, I mean, all those years ago, but I still remember it. But this is also about providing support. It's about, in those days, teachers were left on their own, pulling whatever they could to help get points across, to help deal with those things. Now, you know, we have a concerted curriculum, we have supports, we have parent involvement, we have community, and it essentially gives extra supports, not only to our students, but to our teachers. And, you know, I think the last thing I wanted to say, it always reminds me a little bit of that other thing we all learned in school, which is the Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And if, you know, you're not ready to learn, you're not going to learn. And so we all deal with that. I mean, you know, if you might have something frustrating you for the day, and then you, as an adult, you go to a meeting and you can't concentrate because you've got this thing weighing on your mind. So it's all even that much more powerful, those feelings, I think, when you're younger and you don't have those skills to deal with it. So, you know, I hear words like evidence-based, framework, support for soft skills, a foundation, all true. And it's, it's a component, and a very important component, again, to that college and career-ready. And so again, I want to thank you, I want to thank our community for the support of this. Keep up the good work, and thank you for all your time tonight and for coming, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for a great job.
All right, well, thanks again. Now we are on new business, we already did speak to our moderator, so now we are on the preparation of the warrant article presentations for the deliberative session. What I'd like to do is just provide you with my ideas for who would move an article and who would second. If there's anything that you wanted to discuss at the table tonight, that's fine, otherwise you can think about it and let me know if you have any concerns with what I propose, and we can just take it from there. So I was thinking, time to wake up, get some bright lights, the pupils redilate. All right, so I was thinking the gifts and property, Jenna would move that, Lori Peters would second. The MTA contract, both Shannon and Lori Rothhouse negotiated that, so I thought Shannon would move, Lori Rothhouse would second. And then for the MTA contract trailer, I thought Shannon would move, Jenna would second. And for the market adjustment, I thought Lori Rothhouse would move, and I would second. I'll give you a moment for those of you that are, you got it all down? Okay. The Thornton's Ferry roof, I thought I would move, and Lori Peters could second. And then for the year-end unassigned general funds, I thought Lori Peters could move, and Jenna could second. So I would say if you, if you have any concerns, and you, you know, if there's anything you wanted to talk about, my goal is just to get this over to Lynn in the next couple of days, so I'll just make sure Lori Peters isn't here this evening, as I mentioned, she was excused. I'll just run this by her, and if she's good, and you all are good, then we'll just go ahead and get this over to Lynn Christensen. Okay?
Let me ask a question on the gifts and property. Jenna, Jenna and who second?
Lori Peters.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Okay, any questions there? All right, next up is the competency assessment and grading discussion, Kim Yarlet.
I don't know where it is. Is there another presentation?
Another presentation.
Okay. Oops. Okay, well, thank you for having me this evening. I've been asked to do a little bit of background
background, um, information about, around competency-based grading. And, um, talk a little bit about where we are in our district with competency-based versus traditional grading. Um, and, and just as a means by which to inform the public, the traditional grading scale is what we know as percents that students are given and typically averaged for a final grade. And a standards-based grading, um, so, there is, there is some difference between standards-based grading and competency-based grading. But essentially it's a scale of a four, three, two, one with the necessary, um, three and a four for students to indicate or, um, show their learning that they've met the standard or they've met the competency. So in a traditional, um, grading system, students are expected to master a grade level college and career ready standards, eight, standards and students, um, advance at the educator's pace regardless of mastery. In a competency-based learning progression, students are expected to master the competencies that are aligned to the college and career ready standards with clear, transferable learning objectives. And students access customized supports to ensure mastery. So essentially, um, in a traditional learning progression, um, the educator sets the scope and sequence and the pace and the students, um, will try, will look to demonstrate their knowledge in a time-sensitive manner. Whereas with competency, students will be given extra time to, um, demonstrate their, their competencies, um, as well as show in different manners that they've met the competency. So in a traditional grading system, grades are normed. Um, they're typically weighted um, based on the quarter and a final exam and grades are final results and they're based on assessment methods such as to, um, tests, quizzes and projects. And for competency-based grading, um, grades reflect the degree of mastery of the competencies. And that would be that four, three, two, one scale. And instead of students needing to retake a whole course when struggling, they can relearn specific competencies to then earn the course credit. Um, grades provide specific feedback that directs learning and based on learning goals, goals and performance standards. And I really want to emphasize, emphasize the performance standards because in order for, um, a competency-based grading system to be enacted or fully, um, adopted, it's really important that we have performance tasks that are developed so that, uh, we know what we're looking for from students and we have rubrics developed so that students know how to measure where they are and educators know how to measure students learning based on these, um, the rubrics and on performance tasks. Um, so competency-based education is a system where, um, students are empowered to make um, important decisions about their own learning and their experiences and how they will create and apply knowledge and how they will demonstrate their learning. So you might sometimes think of this a little bit like project-based learning where, um, or if students are given a particular problem or task and then they need to solve it and show their learning through various means, you know, and typically it could be that they create a video or they, um, create a brochure or a poster or they do, um, some kind of a performance. So it's whatever it is that, um, an educator can be sure that that student has not only learned the material, but it also is applying it. So it's typically more real-life based scenarios. Um, assessment is really meaningful and positive experience for the students with, um, actionable evidence. Um, there, the work is, is very, there's a lot, heavy level of differentiation based on particular students' learning needs and where they are in meeting those competencies. So versus a test or an exam or final exam, students are given time and, and feedback in order to, um, meet the competencies or demonstrate their knowledge. And, um, it's more on mastery and not the seat time. And, um, they are really self-paced when they're working in a truly competence-based grading system. Um, and strategies to ensure equity for all students are embedded in the culture, structure and pedagogy of schools and educational systems. So it really, the pedago- pedagogy is a really important word here because, um, in order for competencies to be fully adopted by, uh, uh, with, uh, among any community, the community needs to be really well-informed and educated about what the competencies are. Um, and, and what they're not. And so typically, um, around the state and around the nation, competencies are being adopted because they're more rigorous in nature. And, um, they, they, a good competency-based education system would have all seven of these variables. So current work with competencies in Merrimack, um, right now the NEASK work is really a heavy lift at the high school. And, um, essential learning competencies have been identified in grades K through six and are used as part of the standards-based report card. And that was about a five-year, uh, timeline, a little bit more than that because the pandemic struck. And so what happens now is that the report card has actually embedded in it the reporting standards and the competencies that students need to demonstrate and it's used on a, the scale of, um, met or developing or exceeding. The, the exact wording is, um, escapes my mind right now. Um, and so it's really proven to be very, very effective. It's been well-adopted by the community and by the parents. We haven't had any pushback with the standards-based report card. And the long-term goal was to then take the middle school and develop competencies and then the high school as well. And so some of that work was done this last, not this summer, but the summer before. Um, no, and that's when we were in, fully in pandemic. It was this summer. We had committees working on essential learning competencies. They weren't ready to roll out in their full form. And also, again, this is a type of work that takes a lot of time because you, we had competencies about five years ago at the high school and what we found was that was because it was a state mandate and they really weren't true competencies. They were more skills. So, uh, an ELA competency might have been like, can read at grade level. And that's truly not a, a competency. A competency really needs to take the standard and really break down the standard and pull it apart and then look for what are the essential pieces that we want students to know and demonstrate and, um, master. And, and that takes time. So they were, it was a very surface level, when we were in a dual grading system at the high school. So the decision was made coming out of COVID and back into this year to not use so, uh, something that wasn't really truly showing, um, mastery. And that some more professional development needed to be done with educators on how to pull apart a standard and how to, um, identify an essential learning competency and then how you're going to grade it with through a rubric and what are the performance tasks that are related to that. So we are looking at, um, at the high school. I've had a conversation with administration there and our goal is to set up a, um, a steering committee this, uh, coming summer and to get this work off the ground. And some of the questions we'll be looking at is, um, again, making sure that we are doing a really good job, that it's rigorous and that it's linked to NEASK and it's linked to the vision of a graduate and the work around, um, universal design for learning. And then to determine if it will maintain at the high school a dual grading system. In other words, we would have a traditional percentage-based grading system and a competency-based, um, indicator. Um, it, prior to this, with the competencies, if students didn't get that three or four, they could remediate in the area where they ju- needed, just so that they could get the course credit. It wasn't an immediate, you fail. So, um, in the dual system, it's sometimes called a hybrid grading system. Um, you can have both that percentage that some parents prefer and you can also have the competency base, which is a better model for students in terms of them demonstrating their mastery. Uh, and it's much more compelling and, um, engaging because the curriculum is tied to it. So I did want to just share this, this brief presentation with you to not only inform the public about the difference between the two, but to also let you know that this is some, an area that we will go visit over the summer and start to do some work around it. Currently, we are working on some curriculum revisions and I have asked through this product that we have with, through Edutopia twenty-one, EduPlanet twenty-one, um, that embedded in all of this is identifying and pulling out the essential learning competencies. So that we're building the ship as we're going because we're doing some really good work. We have the social studies coming up in March where we're gonna upload the social studies curriculum to this software. And I've asked the people who develop the software to put in a place where we're going to identify competencies so that we're not, we're being smarter, working smarter along the way. Um, this is, this is just a surface kind of tertiary, tertiary, um, presentation. But I just really wanted to give you an update because it is a question that's, um, kind of burning what happened to the competencies and where are they going and what's next for Merrimack in this area. And we really need to start to move beyond the K through six and into the seven, eight and then, and nine, 10, 11, 12. And I think we can do the work simultaneous to the curriculum revisions and also have a steering committee where we're, we're pushing forward regardless of whether or not a curriculum is, um, up for revision. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Um, Lori, and we'll just, we'll move right across again.
So really the history of competencies goes back to a Merrimack High School teacher named, uh, Dr. Pollez and he was a science teacher. Um, in the nineteen seventies, he was actually my softball coach and he became the commissioner of education. And his daughter was in algebra two. And, um, she was failing miserably and he went to see the teacher. And the teacher said, she's missing the most basic skills. And, um, he went back and he looked at her report card and she got Bs in algebra one. So he went back to the algebra one teacher and she said, oh, she was just so lovely. She did her homework every day and she had, she showed up and, you know, so she got a B. And he's like, yeah, but she didn't have the skills. And so that's how competencies were born. But what happened in this state of New Hampshire is they just rolled out differently for eighty-four different school districts. No one was doing competencies exactly the same. And so, uh, it's been a rough ride. So to change that system, it's going to really take like what you said. We're gonna need, you know, especially, you know, professional development time, you know, for, uh, professional learning groups to, to research, proven assessment strategies, you know, so teachers can get together and talk about best practices and, and how they're actually measuring what we, you know, a competency is the skills, you know, what do we want a student to know and learn? And then to together figure out how to have common assessments, you know, so if I have, you know, algebra one with Mr. Prue and someone has algebra one with Ms. Leonard, the assessments would be the same. It wouldn't be like, oh, good, I got this teacher and that's easy. You know, it'd be like common assessments, common curriculum. And so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a three, three to five year, you know, down the road practice. But, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we're discussing it and that we're gonna move it forward because I think it's the way that we have to look at education today. We have to look at it. It's not seat time. It's, it's really what do we want kids to know and learn and how we're gonna pa- prepare them for the future. And then, you know, my favorite story, which I'm sure people have heard before, it's like the airplane story, you know, like so the pilot gets on the airplane and he tells everyone, you know, I got a B plus in flight school. And people are like, oh, that's so great. And he's like, oh, yes, I got an A plus in takeoff and I got a B plus in instruments. And I got an A in, um, communication. But I got a D minus in landing, so buckle up, you know. And it's like, we used to mush all that together and call it agreed. And now we're saying, well, you know what, landing the plane is as important as the takeoff of the plane. So we have to look at education in those silos and make sure a student is competent in all of that. So, so thank you for your presentation and, um, I appreciate it.
Shannon.
And I'm asking because again, probably not gonna hear the, how the story ends, um, from the side of the table. Um, so the things that your presentation didn't, um, give me an idea of how it would work, um, is I look at, you know, graduating classes, top ten, class valedictorian, salutatorian, but they're all gonna have fours. So how do you know a four is a four is a four? How do you know stack ranking? And on top of that, you know, the thing that you're talking about is, you know, they're gonna learn at different pathways and different paces, which means that some are going to, we keep talking about intervention, but we're also gonna talk about extension. So they're not only gonna master the core competency, but they may master extent, extension competencies. So above and beyond what, you know, how are we gonna measure like a, a student's true academic performance on a, a four number scale and be able to kind of stack rank them to say, you know, you, you know, you met competency, like you mastered competency at the highest level, but you mastered the competency and all this other stuff above and beyond because you just excelled. And how do you, how do you measure that? Uh, and I think those are the answers that, you know, you don't have to answer tonight because you, they haven't started your committee work yet on that. But I think those are the things that as a parent who, you know, will probably have a lot of questions, how do I, you know, how will I get my kids the extensions? And then again, will the extensions ding them? Or will it, can, can it advance them in their kind of ranking? Cause that's why we're getting into things like scholarships and applications and, and that's the thing that even when we started talking about this, what, seven, eight years ago? Um, we didn't really have like, how's, how's a competency grade gonna work on a college, college application? And all the other, all the other kids are doing it.
I can answer that.
And, and yeah, but the thing is, how, how do we show, show that, um, in what we're doing? Especially kind of playing off of what Lori's saying, being that, um, you know, we, yeah, we have eighty-four versions of what a competency is. So, so to that, you know, I think those are the questions that I'm looking forward to hearing from my couch. Well, you know, what that will look like, but I think, you know, let the committee do its work. But that, that's gonna be the interesting part of, of the work that you're about to, and, you know, about to do. So.
So I was just gonna say, so, um, colleges now have really, they, they're doing competency-based systems. And really, when you look at elementary schools, they've been doing competency-based education forever. Like, we really should just look at, like, this is what you need to know in fourth grade, you know, that they, so it was really the middle school and the high school. But they've adapted that because they understand that competency learning is really going to be measured and it's gonna be evidence-based. Where in the old system, you would get a grade and the grade could be different for every school district. This A could be way different than this A. And a competency grade is gonna show that you know, you've mastered those skills. And so it's really important though, when we talk about the assessment though, that it's multiple assessments. It's not like I got you. See, in the old grading system, like when I went to college, it was the, you know, the bell, you know, that bell curve, right? So many As, so many Bs, so many Cs. And now it's all about, we want everybody to learn. So you don't say to someone who's getting their driver's license, oops, you get one chance and if you don't get it, you'll never be able to drive. We say, you know what, you don't know how to parallel park. Go back and learn how to parallel park so you can be a competent driver. That's, that's what's driving this whole system. We're getting away from kind of the punishment of grades and making, you know, all kids can learn at high levels. Let's get them there.
Yeah, thank you. And Shannon, those are really good questions because they are going to be the questions that come up from the community. And that's where we need to say, how important are the rankings and how important is the, the, the valedictorian? And there's some people who really hold on to that. So, um, whether or not we decide to go full competency or we go hybrid, um, that we'd have to see where the community is and measure that because we need to take that into consideration. Knowing that though, is that we typically will develop five, um, performance tasks so that a student has five chances to show and demonstrate mastery. And if they, once they demonstrate it, you know they've demonstrated and you go on. You don't stay there. So that's where another really important piece is that you brought up is really making sure that we have really strong learning projection, projections. And that we're really going, if they've met the tenth grade standard, that they can go on to eleventh grade standard or twelfth grade standard. So there's not that, that's kind of glass ceiling. So I appreciate that and I've taken notes and I know that we have a lot of work to do. Um, and I also really appreciate your parallel to the elementary because that, I totally agree with you. Kids are, you know, the, the days where kids come home with all of these yarns and a, a big, you know, trifold and they have to demonstrate, you know, they have to do their science project on anything they want is perfect example.
Jenna.
So along the lines, uh, just building off of what everyone said and, you know, Shannon was talking about, you know, problems or feedback or things that you might get from the community. I, this immediately triggered a few things that I've been thinking of and problems to solve. I don't know if you're gonna have school board members or parents on the steering committee. I don't know, oh, sorry, what the vision is for that. Um, but my immediate thought, when we started talking about competency-based education is that there's some things that this, some problems, um, problems is the wrong word, um, that this could address. Things like, and I think we've talked about this before. So I'm gonna use a personal example. I have a kid who's a three-sport varsity athlete in high school who the last semester of his senior year, when he could have takes up, taken something else as elective, had to take an extra PE elective and he had, and he took team sports. So I remember him coming home and saying, oh, I started whatever. And my husband saying, you know, what are your, what are your classes and, and then my son says team sports and my husband flipped his lid because he's like, why do you have to take team sport? like, "Why do you have to take team sports?" And I say, "Well, you know, competency-based grading, they have to do the thing." He's like, "He's met the competency, and if he hasn't met the competency, we need new coaches." You know what I mean? And, and then I was like, "Oh, he's, he's right, he's right." Like, you know what I mean? And it's things like that, like, those are some problems that we might be able to fix, things like, a kid who's a three-sport, two, however, whatever the standard is, we make sure that our coaches are teaching to our competencies, and maybe they can use their sports experience as a PE, that second PE credit, so that they can graduate, and then they could maybe take something like marketing two, you know, which my son probably would have taken, and would have been a better, you know, it would have been a better use, and not that PE, you know what I'm saying, right? Okay, not a better use of his time, sure.
He loved team sports.
I'm sure team sports is wonderful, Mr. Erda, but...
He was happy to take it.
Yeah, he was happy to take, he was not happy to take it. Um, he was not at all happy to take it, but I made him be happy about it. However, I'm just saying, things like that, or things like, you get a kid who wants to take creative cooking, right? They have to take intro to foods first, and they look at this thing, and it says, literally, it says in the course catalog, "This is for someone who has no experience with cooking or food whatsoever." So, you have a kid who literally cooks dinner at her house frequently, you know, she wants to take creative cooking, and, but she's like, "I don't wanna take intro to foods." Maybe there's a way we can have her show that she met the competency so she can test out of it and go on to creative cooking, not even to get the credit, just to get to the class that more fits where she's at. These are the kind of things that I think, and I could be wrong, but I think make the difference between a high school that's just doing high school and a high school that, and that's not what I'm saying we're doing, but I'm just saying, that really thinks outside the box, to meet kids, that does what this says here, meet, make empowered students to make daily important decisions about their learning experience. It's not about seat time, right? So, it's not necessarily about my son's seat time in team sports, it's about the fact that he learned whatever the competencies by playing three years of varsity soccer. He learned whatever those competencies were, and he doesn't have to take that. He's met those competencies by doing something.
It would be an extended learning opportunity.
Exactly. Like, these are the things I'd like to really start getting creative about so that we can have kids that, it can free them up to explore different things if they don't, say, don't have to take that PE credit. You know, maybe he can take psychology and realize, "Oh, I really like this, maybe I'd like to look into this in college," or whatever. That's the point. It's not that I want them to get out of anything as much as I want them to be able to free things in their schedule or explore things or not have to take things that really seem like, well, I could've met this competency, competency in a lot of other very meaningful ways. So, I think, as we're exploring this, I think those are some of the things we should look into at the same time. And I think you'll hear those from, things from parents, too, if you talk to them, you know? And those are just two examples that came right to mind.
Shannon?
I was gonna ask you, relive history with me, Cindy. Was it a PE-three waiver that they would get for varsity sports, or was it a PE-two waiver? Because we had this at our table.
Yeah. I mean, there is a certain waiver, but it doesn't take away, let's say, health, per se.
No, no, it was PE-two, though. It was a PE-two. And Ken Johnson was here. So, Ken Johnson was principal at the time, came to us and basically said that we would get, a student who did varsity sports could get a PE-two waiver, maybe it was a PE-three credit, I'm not sure which, but that's something to look back on the archives, they might have to go on microfiche because you've been here this long.
You know, my recollection...
But yeah, seriously.
Is different. My recollection is that it wasn't granted, but I, I could be wrong. I mean, I...
I just remember coming to the table on that, and I, but the thing is, I think we're all fine with it.
Well, it didn't pass because when I asked, it was, "Nope, sorry, gotta take it," so.
Because I remember it being kind of scratching my head when we, but we can go back and look in the archives for that one.
But again, one of the things that we talked about earlier is with guidance, coming up with, you know, some real extended learning opportunities such as work skills, and then students could personalize their education, so that's an example of some student who said, "Listen, I think I have the competencies. What are they? Demonstrate those competencies and, and gain that credit." So, those are all, like, we're just knocking down some walls, and we're, we're coming up with some new ideas, so, I get it.
And I was gonna say, you were just going into kind of where I was going with it, is it's just a much bigger holistic conversation where certain things start to bleed into others. I had written in my notes yellow, and, you know, you know, the things that I think of when I look at the, how we look at competencies are things like ELO, as well as, you know, remediation. What are we doing to really look at our students using the data? How do we help them perform at the best level possible, every single student? And, you know, how are we, you know, I think less of the, I think it's less of the traditional model, more about really wrapping around student success and, and, you know, which also goes into improving our graduation rates, another conversation that we have. And I think, you know, like I said, it's a holistic conversation, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done, I mean, that continued to be done, it has been done, is continuing to evolve. And one of the other items that I wanted to mention was even something that's come up a lot in the past, not so much in recent years, at least the last year or two, which is the, the grading of homework, right? Is that the right, you know, I think in a true competency-based system, you know, that probably really aligns. We're in a hybrid, and is that really the right decision? Or how are we, how are we really managing that today? I mean, I think there's some workarounds, I think, you know, sometimes, you know, students are getting work in class that might've been homework, but then they don't have enough time, so they have to take it home to do it, or is there, you know, are we really, you know, is, is, sometimes, you know, when we look at the committee work, I guess, I think that's one other area to look at, you know, because how is it being implemented? Is it really, you know, aligned with what we wanna do or where we wanna go, and what needs to happen, I think, in, in that realm as well?
Yes, and I appreciate your, you know, you're very knowledgeable about this and passionate about it, and I appreciate your background knowledge around this. When we were doing the elementary standards-based report card, we sent key people to see Gusky and to learn more, you know, learn from the, get that professional development. I've had conversations with Mr. Claire, the high school principal, and, you know, subs are hard to come by right now, and with the focus on NIESK, but he understands both and is passionate both about putting this steering committee together as well as looking at ELOs because they do go hand in hand. And so, there is that big-picture purview that is not like, okay, by summer of, the end of summer of 2022, we're gonna have competencies up and running. That's what happened in Meramec before, and it, the quality and intentionality and just sort of lack of knowledge about what it truly means was spotty. And so, we just need to, we need to just start again, and I think that the work with the curriculum revision is gonna be a really great place to start with getting people's feet wet with this.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I wonder, too, if we need, at some point, you know, and this is just brainstorming, I'm just thinking off the cuff, you know, is a director of student success that aligns with admin and all the work that is done in central office, and similar to how we have, how Fern is working, you know, do we need a counterpart there around, you know, to kind of add extra efforts around, you know, the student's success across the board? So, that's just a food for thought.
Excellent feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Jenna?
I was just gonna add to what you were saying is, you know, that's really, that's really sort of like, you know, multi-tiered systems of support exist for social-emotional learning, but it's also there for academic. It's, it's meeting both of those needs where you're meeting, you're, you're having those systems of support for kids wherever they fall on the continuum, whether it's in their social-emotional development or the academic development. If we, if we can shore up all of those multi-tiered systems of support, that is where we become successful. So, like what you're saying, a director of student success that focuses on academics, and then we have somebody like Fern, who's a director of student wellness, and it all becomes that big thing, yeah.
Well, thank you. Okay, next up is the, the first reading of the revised student conduct discipline and due policy.
Yes. First of all, I'm wanting to have the lights put back on. Presenting to you tonight a policy that complies with two amendments to the Student Discipline Statute 193, colon 13. It was prepared by Wadley, Starr, and Peters, and meets the spirit and intent of the statute. As Attorney Dean Egger has stated to our leadership team, discipline and due process that used to be defined by school officials is pretty much a statutory requirement right now, and has turned into a statutory requirement. This new discipline, which complies in every regard with the law, creates, requires school systems to create a system of supports to allow students to understand the consequences of their behavior, to attempt to correct misconduct, and promote behavior within acceptable norms. It is essentially more of a progressive discipline approach. As you'll notice, on page two of the document, it addresses what we heard tonight from Fern Sidon and the committee on social-emotional well-being and, and skills development in children to deal with conflict, deal with stress, deal with anxiety, deal with certain propensities to certain behaviors. So, the policy, as Dean Egger has stated, requires a graduated series of age-appropriate responses to misconduct. It has to address short-term, long-term suspensions, in particular, expulsions, and addresses very succinctly the appeal rights of students and their, their families. It also is very timely that we are presenting in March the collaborative problem-solving approach to discipline that is run through Mass General and is, as Kim has mentioned before, and Fern, a restorative, sort of a restorative justice approach. So, it is impossible for me to go through all twelve pages. I will say to you, I'd probably recommend that we waive the first reading, it will be posted for public comment. Attorney Egger also has provided us with a thirty-eight-page document from which he provided some outstanding professional development to us a while back. Wadley, Starr, and Peters have been exceptionally helpful to us in going through this policy and making sure that we know the various steps that are required to provide due process rights to students, to address legally short-term suspensions, long-term suspensions, expulsions, and also a section that particularly deals with students with disabilities. And making sure that we determine, first of all, if the behavior is a manifestation of their, of their disability. So, with that being said, the policy is presented to you for the first reading, which, once again, I would suggest, since it's twelve pages long, you may wanna waive, but it, it is prepared by our legal counsel and meets the requirements of the law in every respect.
I agree with you that it's, it's just way too lengthy to go through the reading process. We will be here for probably over an hour trying to read it, so I think it does make sense to take this back, come up with any questions. If there's anything we wanted to discuss now, we can certainly do that, just like we typically have done in other policies. Shannon?
The only question I have, and I've asked us a couple of different, when we had a couple of different policies, is, did you just throw out the whole old policy and replace it with this one, or did you update language? So, there's no comparative on this, and I did not look up the other one, full disclosure. So, but, I mean, did we just kind of get rid of the old one altogether?
That's, that's what I'm gonna recommend, is that this replaces the policy that was last passed in 2007.
Okay. But yeah, I know, for a couple of our policies, if we can just, if you are updating policies that are in place and you're refining them, do strike-throughs and highlights so we know what language you're getting rid of and what language you're adding. Because that, for us, it's like, I've been doing a lot of this, like, with two pieces of paper, and I, you know, it's like, it's finding the difference, like those, you know, it's, it's more work than we need to do.
This wasn't edited, though, right?
This is just, that's what I was asking.
A replacement.
This is a replacement. It's been thoroughly reviewed by the leadership team also, and so, I present it to you with complete confidence that it complies with the statute.
I just wanna make one comment, and that's, I'm, I applaud you for pursuing the focus on restorative practices. First of all, it dovetails completely with what we're doing with SEL, and it takes it and it brings it into the sphere of discipline, and that is absolutely cutting-edge, it's absolutely the direction we need to be moving. And in 2022, I almost said 2021, but I guess it's 2022, 2022, it's, it's, it's the right way to work with kids through difficult behaviors. So, thank you for, for doing that, and I'm glad that that's weaved into this new policy.
Lori?
So, I have, I have just a couple of things. So, on page four of twelve, I know this happens, but, you know, counseling of the student, you know, discussing the importance of, you know, appropriate behavior, giving them strategies, you know, a student speaks out, and you talk to them about pushing the pause button, you know, that, I just think that's not really in here, but I know what happens, but, you know, something about having that time. And then, on page five of twelve, under middle, middle and high school, so it talks about superintendent involvement, but then if you read, it says, "The decision of administrator should be final and shall not be appealable." I think we should follow the chain of command. The chain of command would be, you know, goes to the principal, but it has the opportunity to go to the superintendent, and then, you know, rarely happens, but it does have the opportunity to go to the school board. You know, the only time I had that happen, the school board backed me up, but, you know, the parent did have the opportunity to bring their grievance all the way up the chain.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Any other comments regarding this at this time? We can resume the conversation at our next meeting. Next is other new business. Is there any other new business that we need to discuss? Shannon?
For the last few years, we've been getting monthly enrollments for students throughout the year, and it's basically something that's in our packet every, every month. And it's alarmed me that we lost ten percent of our grade twelve from the first week of school till now. So, we started at three hundred fifty-two seniors, and we're down to three hundred and twenty-one. And so, I was hoping that we could get information about what's happening. Are they choosing different educational institutions? Are they not going to be pursuing graduation? Because as we're talking about trying to increase our graduation rate, this is alarming, and it's only February. So, to me, this is a red flag.
We'll check into that immediately.
I have one more, too.
Thanks, Shannon. I'm Lori Rothaus.
Okay. So, on page seven of twelve, so, and we're talking about suspensions, short-term suspensions up to ten days. Again, there is going to be a chance for in-school suspensions, and, but if there is some way, I don't know, that we could talk about holding days in abeyance, like, you know, a student fight, so it's a ten-day suspension. So, when the administrator meets with the student and they say, "Well, this is a ten-day suspension, but I will hold five days in abeyance if you do this, this, and this, but if you fight again, you're gonna get that five days and another," you know, so we start working with them to give them hope and try to get them to understand, like, well, this is the behavior we wanna see changed. So, if, well, you're supposed to be out for ten days, but we're gonna give you five, you might have to do a couple in school, you might have to write a letter of apology, or even you might have to do, you know, some community service, something to, 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 to keep them, a ten-day suspension sinks a kid, you know what I mean? It just sinks them. So, if there's some way we can alter that a little bit.
Well, I, I don't know how much you know about restorative practices, but that's really what that's all about. It's about restoring the, the child within the, quote, lack of a better word, discipline process, how to make restoration for what they have done, to work towards... process, how to make restoration for what they have done, to work towards justice, which is both, you know, both the, the person being held responsible, and the person being restored in relationship with whoever was harmed in the process. It's, it's really pretty incredible.
Some, some of those procedures for the upper grade levels, and restorative practices are outlined on page three of, of 12, and so, you know, everything is age-appropriate, as, as we know, and it is not limited to just, just these, so. I'm sure we'll have many more discussions about this particular statute, and the discipline requirements, and restorative practices requirements, and due process.
Thank you. And then any other new business to discuss? Okay?
So, is there something in here, I didn't, I didn't see it about, when, when a student meets the level of expulsion, again, the chain of command, that they have the right to appeal it, to-
That's all in there.
It is here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh yes, here it is.
Okay. Are we good? All right, next is item number seven, policies. A, the second review of the revised drug-free workplace, drug-free schools policy. It says, Matt?
Yeah, do you want me to read these, as we have done in the past?
Well, it's the second review, we don't usually read them, do we?
Second reviews, no.
Yeah.
No.
We don't need to read it, just wondered if there was any other comments from the board at this time.
No, I just recommend we put it on consent at our next meeting.
Okay, I have a second?
Thank you.
Oh, we don't even need to do that, yeah.
In favor?
Yeah, no, we'll put it on consent, gotcha.
In favor.
And the same thing with the second review of employment references and verification, do we want to put that one on consent as well? If anyone has an issue, they could pull it from consent before we actually vote on it. Okay. Let's move forward that way. Now we're moving on to item number eight, which is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the February 7th, public and non-public minutes, made by Lori Rothaus, second by Shannon? Any changes, edits, or updates? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that's 5-0-0. The consent agenda. Kim?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that, because it's the investment policy.
Okay.
That's the policy we had in place since 2008, that we did a review of last time. I don't believe it is in the packet, but it was in the packet last time, and so your, your job with that was just to, you know, review it, and say, yes, we are not investing in bitcoins or anything of the such, so we invest in stable commodities, FDIC insured, et cetera, et cetera. So it's on the consent agenda for your approval, and just your recognition that you have reviewed it, so when my auditors come, I can show them the minutes of this meeting, and say, yes, they reviewed the investment policy. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, made by Shannon, second by Lori Rothaus? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That's 4-0-0. The next one is the, is other, and committee reports. Any committee report, Shannon, and then Jenna, and then Lori Rothaus?
I have two, first, the professional development committee met, and we were, we're just basically in the throes of it, it is a very busy time of year for the PD committee, and the work that they are doing, so, I just want to give credit to the committee, though. It happens to be the same time as that poll came down at the Merrimack High School, and we still ended up getting quorum with 15 people able to log into the meeting with no power in their buildings. So, just as far as the fortitude of that committee, I just had to give them credit where credit was due. Quorum, we're, it would have been, had a very good reason not to have one.
Not to bring up a bad subject, Matt.
Sorry. I just saw him cringe over there.
Yeah, I know, well, that was-
That was a tough day for you.
I, I knew it was a transformer, because I've heard those blow before, I knew exactly what it was, but I didn't realize the extent of how it blew before I went outside, and I just want to thank the Merrimack Police Department, Merrimack Fire Department, and I want to thank those two or three or four brave men from EverSource. I didn't get their names, but boy, I'll tell you, they knew exactly what to do, and they just were taking care of it, and we had power restored on a temporary basis by around 5:20 that evening, and then we had a brand-new telephone pole put in by midnight of that night, so the EverSource did a tremendous job, so.
So, but yes, we were meeting a little in the dark on iPhone, a lot of iPhones, but we ended up going through a lot of, really getting that paperwork up to date, the IPDPs, the individual professional development plans, because you know how I love acronyms, to make sure that they're all kind of where they need to be, I think, with, with COVID, and with some of those IPDB plannings, that they had to really make sure that they're all getting caught up, and are communicating with their buildings, to make sure that they are going to get their work in on time, so that they keep their certifications, because it's so very important, especially as a public school that doesn't have a choice. So, they were definitely looking to collect some more feedback on August Academy, so looking to compile, and then I think it'll be on our next agenda in March. So Kim, I think you're leading the charge on that agenda item next month. The master plan committee is still working on the updates, and there's nothing new from the state to work on, and that is about it, but it was a, a tough meeting to get through, but they did a wonderful job, and again, Lisa Peralta ran a very firm meeting, considering all the obstacles she had to deal with, so kudos to Lisa for, for a job well done.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot my other one, I had two. The Greater Woods Subcommittee met as well, and we do have some changes that will be coming on to the committee, and for the first time, it won't be me, so, I am the school board liaison, so there are a number of members, and I've been on this since the committee was established, and then reestablished, so I have been the school board liaison since we were involved. Now, the reason it's important for us to have a, a presence there, is because the first 50 acres of the 800-plus acre parcel, which will probably go to over 1,000, once, once all is said and done, is access to the middle school. So it's probably one of the best access points into that property is at the middle school, and I know we're doing a lot with that property, with our trails and everything else. So, they just were asking if there would be continued school board representation, and I said, I see no reason why it wouldn't, that was something that, as a board, I'm there because I am on the board, but that's something that the board committed to way before, when Jody Valancourt was chair, so I don't see us changing that anytime soon. So, something to consider when you're doing your succession planning, that this committee will be meeting the day after the election, so maybe not for that meeting, but upcoming, keeping that, that representation will be very helpful.
Thanks, Jenna.
So the CIA Committee met this last week, and really, our, our, we had a big agenda, but we really evaluated two new educational tools, which were sort of conditionally approved based on cost. I was so excited about both of them, so hopefully, you know, the cost will be vetted, and we'll, it'll be something that'll become available to our educators, two really good technology tools, to really enhance learning, so very excited about that. And that really took, the, the, the two presentations and the discussion around those really took the majority of that meeting, so.
Thanks, Jenna, Lori Rothaus.
So last week, I had the honor of being in Orlando, Florida, representing Region One, which is New England and New York, for the National Federation of High School Sports Rules Committee. The focus is, in high school sports, is to decrease the number of concussions that are happening in athletics, safety, and then, of course, we're celebrating 50 years of Title IX, which is pretty exciting, when you think about, like, I remember Title IX starting, so I guess I'm old, but that's pretty exciting news.
Thank you. Moving on to comments, is there any, are there any comments from the board? Shannon?
I just wanted to say, tonight is exactly what we needed, is a board, having teachers come before us, having Kim come before us and talk about education, and that was exactly what we all signed up for, and I think, you know, I'm looking forward to being able to see more of it, but that's something that, when it comes down to it, why we're all here. You know, getting each one up one, I've heard, you know, interventions, extensions, it's all played into tonight's, tonight's meeting, and it was a meeting that I think as a board member, after a couple of years, we really need to have to feel good about the work we're doing, the work we're supporting, really, we're not doing it, you guys are doing all the work, but the work we're supporting. And so, thank you for coming out, teachers and, and parents, who helped that committee, we know that you're just a valued resource to, to the outcomes that we had tonight, and will continue to be so, but this is exactly what this board needs to hear more of at our meetings, what we're doing to, to be, you know, the champion of education that we've been for, for decades, so, it was a relief, I just wanted to say it, it's a relief.
Well, and I can say, as we were planning the agenda, I recall, we all said the same thing, like, this is, you know, not, the last couple of meetings have really felt like real meetings, and, and, you know, doing that hard work that needs to be done, so I, I couldn't agree with you more, it's really refreshing and inspiring, even just to see the students, they're not yet in front of us, and they haven't been for a long time, but just to see the work, you know, being done organically in the classroom, even if we only got a couple snippets of it, was very refreshing, so, thank you for, thank you for seeing that, Shannon.
I just want to add, too, that I love seeing the kids come in the school board, but I really loved seeing the video, because the video gave us a picture of what goes on in the classrooms in a way that can't happen, I mean, I, it's, every adorable kid that comes here is awesome, you know, my daughter got the chance to do that when she was really little, but to see, you know, even me, as, as an, as an SEL teacher, I went, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make one of those, and something I saw in the background in the video, like, oh, I want that, I'm gonna do that, you know what I mean? It was just, I really enjoyed the video, so more of that. Give some random Merrimack High School student a video, and have them tell us what a, a school day is like, I'd love to see that, appropriate, of course.
There's a club for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any, there's no public here, so there's no public comments on agenda items here, do we have any-
There are no emails.
And no emails, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Lori Rothaus, second by Shannon Barnes, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
That's 4-0-0. Thanks, everyone, and have a good night.